A regularly scheduled Waterville City Council meeting, there are agendas available on the table near the door. And there are agendas available on the city of Waterville's website. I really need, sheet's gone. What else am I supposed to say?
Was it what? Your sheet's gone.
Yeah, they stole it. As far as saying hello. Boom. All items appearing on the consent agenda are voted on in one motion and vote. Generally, these items are routine in nature and do not require discussion. All items listed under unfinished business or new business are voted on separately. First, councilors will be given an opportunity for questions or comments. Once councilors have been given an opportunity, citizens will be given an opportunity to speak. Citizens must speak at the podium and identify themselves. Each citizen will be allowed up to three minutes. Finally, councilors will be given another opportunity to speak or comment. Citizens who would like to speak on a topic that does not appear on tonight's agenda will have an opportunity to do so during the public comment section of the meeting. Pledge allegiance. This is loud.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Table, I don't want this either. Alright, disclosure of conflict of interest. Anyone? None. City managers report.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, the South End Neighborhood Association will be holding its Neighborhood Cleanup Day on October 28th from 8:30 to noon. Encouraging anyone interested in volunteering for this great event to come out for that morning. Three and a half hours on a Saturday morning, again, 10:28. And please contact Senate for further information, but great community event. Quarry Road Trails will be having their second annual Quarry Road Trail Fest, will be taking place also on the 28th from 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM. Trail Fest is a packed day of festivities and trail running races at Quarry Road. This year's Trail Fest will feature a five-kilometer community trail race and a 15-kilometer challenge trail race. The 15-kilometer challenge race has a technical single-track portion. Costumes are highly encouraged for both races. Please register on the Quarry Road webpage or call Waterville Parks and Rec for more information. I'd like to thank everyone for turning out for my open office hours event yesterday at the library. Appreciate all of your feedback, your concerns, and your comments. Really great session, some good people came out. Our next session will be November 13th, 2:30 to 4:30, the location to be decided, so stay tuned for more information on that. Happy to report our community development specialist position after an internal staff interview committee spent some time over the last two weeks interviewing candidates. And a conditional offer has been extended to one candidate and they are currently in the background process. Hope to have a formal announcement of this candidate in the very near future. We'll be very pleased to get this filled. As you know, there are a number of pressing concerns, including housing, grants, and many other areas this person will be tackling. Downtown visioning process, this has been a long process. As you know, the city's been engaged with BBB out of New York. We have a final product the council will be taking up and reviewing and hopefully approving this evening. I just wanted to say that city staff is already awaiting this approval. Plans are in the works to begin tackling some of the sort of lower-hanging fruit projects that you'll see in category one of the document in your packet. So we are actively in planning mode and waiting for this approval and we intend to get going as soon as possible. And I think the community's looking for us to implement this plan and not put it on a shelf or to collect dust, and we are ready to do that. I'd like to thank the presidents of all of our local colleges, so President Green of Colby, LeChance of Thomas, and Normandin of the Kennebec Valley Community College for taking the time to meet with me. I had some great conversations with them, talking about trends in higher education, their relationship with the community, and how we can partner and work together on many common goals and missions around here. So thank you to them for their time and attention, and I look forward to building our relationship from here. The airport, some updates from our airport. In just the first 90 days of our fiscal year, the airport collected 211 landing fees totaling just over $22,000. For reference, last year in its entirety, we collected $73,000 and the prior year only $40,000, so we're off to a very good start. Also, in the first 90 days, we sold just shy of 20,000 gallons of jet fuel. Our budget projection goal for the entire year is 70,000, so we're well on our way there. And other news, airport staff has been working diligently on several projects in-house, including crack ceiling for tax UAD, the terminal ramp area, as well as the Crosswind Runway. They've also been working to clear and repair fencing on the east side of the airport. And the FAA restriping project on the main runway was completed last month ahead of time and under budget. In addition, work is ongoing involving an electrical project with local vendors and contractors to correct power supply issues to our hangar development area. And we are positioning the proper infrastructure in place for a plan to build out that can accommodate up to 40 more private hangars. So thanks to Randy for all of his work up there, but some important updates from the airport. Temple Street, Front Street intersection right out here, our city engineer Andy McPherson has been in touch with CSX. They are working on the light timing for that intersection. I will admit, progress has been slower than we hoped. I will say CSX, I will say publicly, CSX has been rather slow, and so I hope we can collaborate further and get this done sooner rather than later if CSX is watching our council meeting. But we thank Andy for being diligent and keeping on top of this and hope for more progress soon. Update on our rental registry, we are at about, I think as of today, 44% of units having been registered. I will mention that we had a meeting this afternoon, councilors DeBruto and Green. We're also in that meeting with Dan Bernier of the Apartment Owners Association. We talked about the progress to date and some ways to kind of get that number up. We think we can do that. So we are actively engaged in trying to boost that number, and this topic will be coming back around to the council in the next few months for further consideration. I also just want to mention, last week, we had a really great honor and a great ceremony over at the Waterville High School. They were presented with the Performing Arts School of Excellence Award from the National Federation of State High Schools. A really great distinction that really highlights the arts and music programs at Waterville High. And we're going to have a more formal recognition of this award probably at our next meeting, but I just wanted to mention that today because this was a big deal. I was able to attend the award ceremony, Councilor Green was there, also many others. This was a big deal for them, a great award, and so congrats to our high school for this honor, and we'll have more to say on this next week. Final reminder, our next meeting, because of Election Day, will be Wednesday, 11/8 instead of Tuesday, so please come on Wednesday night that week. Thank you.
Council committees, council comments and committees. First, I want to start, like this brand-new space looks great, and before Claude gets a chance, I want to thank Diane Weinstein because this is like the first space that she wanted us to fit when we were first looking for council chambers. So, yeah, she went out, she knew right off the bat. What, the rest of you?
I'd like to thank the city staff for working very hard to get this space ready. I saw it a couple months ago and it was very much different, and so it's amazing, the transformation in a couple of months. So, yeah, thank you. Also, just want to mention that we are accepting applications currently from outside agencies who are interested in getting support from the city. We have $50,000 in ARPA funds that we have pledged to distribute to nonprofit organizations. So that deadline is November 1st, and the application and instructions is on the city website. I have one further comment, and it's kind of a confession and a challenge. So lately, I've been hearing a lot about concerns about the speed of traffic in Waterville. On both, you know, residential streets, particularly Burley Street, which a lot of people use as a pass-through street. And there was actually an accident there recently that was, you know, very unfortunate. Fortunately, there was no serious casualty, but I started noticing my own driving, taking a look at a speedometer, and it's, 25 is pretty slow. But it's, and I'm betting most of us drive faster than that on the regular. So I just ask you to watch the speedometer as you're bopping around town and slow down, and we'll have safer streets and a better experience for pedestrians, too. Thank you.
Last week, the resilience committee met, and amongst the other things that we talked about was some of the projects that we're going to need at the high school to get it up to accreditation level. Some of the things that we're looking at there are the HVAC systems. So if we can line up some grants, but we may end up having to put some money into the bond, into our bond system because they need about $30 million to get it up to speed over the next several years. Otherwise, the resilience committee is in the process of putting together a list of different projects that the city will want to put on in terms of going forward, what we'll be wanting to work on in terms of approaching climate change issues and other kinds of emergency issues. So anyway, the resilience committee is on its task, and in the next couple of months, we hope to have a few more concrete things to report to council. The comprehensive plan committee also met last week. We met with Joel Greenwood, is that, Joel Greenwood from the Kennebec Council of Governments. And he's agreed to come down in the next few weeks and facilitate public meetings to discuss the draft chapters that we have prepared at the committee. Mr. Greenwood suggested that one of the ways to start would be to do a, what do you call them?
Survey?
Survey, excuse me. To do a survey that would be an online survey that would be open to all of the residents to see what the ideas that the public has as far as what the city's plan ought to be for the next decade or so. So anyway, that's the, it'll be the two steps. One, we'll do the survey, and then we'll start in on a series of public meetings. So I'm not sure how the survey roulette's going to be. It'll probably be sometime in the next, hopefully before the next council meeting. And then at the next council meeting, we should be in position to set forth the schedule for public meetings. The plan is to have the public meetings here and on, at this point, on Thursdays. So that'll probably be starting in November.
Anyone?
Building, hello, building what Mr. Keanrath was talking about at Quarry Road. I just wanted to highlight a couple other activities that are coming up in relatively short order there that I myself am involved in and I think are important. On Saturday, these are both on Saturday, November 4th, that's the Kids Fun Day from 11:00 AM to 2:00 PM with all kinds of fun activities. For example, apple slinging, whatever that means, beanbag toss, trail works, nature scavenger hunt, pumpkin art, pumpkin bowling, fairy fall tile activities, and more. And then, and another really important activity on that day is the ski and skate swap that is at the snowmaking shed there at Quarry Road. This is a chance for the Quarry Road Ski Club to get much-needed funds to support access to the programming for children broadly so that children can enjoy that facility in the wintertime in the really excellent ski club that's out there for young grade school and middle school kids. So at the ski and skate swap, you can buy cross-country skis, equipment, alpine, snowshoes, any kind of winter clothing. There's lots of really nice coats and stuff like that, ice skates, hockey equipment, all kinds of stuff. People sell all kinds of stuff. You can sell all kinds of stuff. If you have a bunch of winter gear that's cluttering up your attic or your garage, or you just want to get rid of because your kids grew out of it, the club keeps 20% consignment on anything that you'd like to sell and make a little bit of money off of. Or you can donate it to the club, and we'll put all of the proceeds from that to work getting kids access to the programming at Quarry Road. Teaching another generation of kids, all kinds of fun winter activities at Quarry Road. So that's on Saturday, November 4th. If you want to drop stuff off for consignment, it's, we're going to be open from, I don't know, like 3:00 o'clock in the afternoon till 6:00 PM on that Friday, November 3rd. And then the swap starts from 9:00 till 2:00 on Saturday, overlapping with the Kids Fun Fall Day, whatever. So you can bring your family out, run around out there at Quarry Road and get some inexpensive winter gear if you're looking for it. Don't want to spend a ton of money, but you want some gear, so please, anybody, spread the word and come on up.
Alright, moving on to public comment section of the agenda. Go ahead, sir.
I came up with the, when I was thinking about that project from last, my name's Keith Beal, live on Ash Street, I don't know what district that is, Ward. But anyway, I suggested a poll tax. I've thought about that, I've come up with a plan, I'll pass it up to you folks. Essentially what it is, is to allow entities in the city who aren't presently sharing the tax burden with Waterville residents, i.e. Colby College, Thomas College. And I focused on properties that provide resident space and charge a fee for that resident space. People rent indirectly pay for their property taxes via the rent. And I figured it'll levy a tax of 2% per resident of the fee charge, you see the example on the sheet. So a campus that has 2,000 on-campus residents, not on-campus, and that they, the purported cost is 10 Gs a year that they charge the students, then the tax levy would be about $400,000 a year. It's not a great amount, but I think it's a reasonable amount. And why 2%? 2% is, in my home, taxes to house value ratio, which I don't see as really apples to apples. But if I did, the cost of living in a home, a ratio of the taxes versus the cost of living in my home, it'd be about 40%. So I thought 2% would be more reasonable. So that's my newest proposal. And I'm curious, if there's been any action on the previous proposal.
Right. Read anything with the other proposal?
Okay, I just, I just want to know if it's ridiculous or what. This may be termed ridiculous, too, perhaps.
I don't think we look at anything as ridiculous. I think we appreciate all the ideas that come into us. The difference is, whenever the city starts to think of ideas, there's usually a lot of people that are sort of vetting that idea. And there are certain things that the average person just doesn't take into account.
That's correct.
So, I mean, I wouldn't consider them ludicrous ideas or their ideas. Every idea that comes to us is looked at. We don't always act upon them, but we definitely look at them and pay attention.
Yeah, there are unintended consequences and legal questions, and that's what I would request.
Well, I would think that something like that would be definitely a legal question.
Yeah.
I can tell you they already pay more than $400,000 a year in taxes, but that is definitely a legal question.
They don't pay property taxes, correct?
They do.
They do pay property taxes.
They just don't pay property taxes on anything that's used for education. So like, the dorms aren't, but the downstairs of the dorm downtown absolutely is.
Okay.
The Portland Pie Building, absolutely taxed, the hotel, taxed. They think they pay tax on the green block, too, don't they? That's part of it, so.
Well, the information I received last time was that by federal regulation or state regulation or both, they weren't required to pay property tax.
On anything educational.
Oh, okay. See, that wasn't specified. So I wasted all that brain energy.
No, we mentioned in that meeting that they were, what, the fourth-largest taxpayer in the city? They're the fourth-largest taxpayer in the city, so they certainly pay a significant amount of taxes to the city.
That went over my head, I missed that apparently. Okay.
Yeah.
Well, I'll probably apologize for wasting your time.
Nope, not at all. Keep coming with ideas.
A viable alternative, and there's been nothing on the graduated tax increases for citizens.
I don't think we can afford it. I don't know how the city would go forward. It would put us behind like two or three years.
Well, I'm thinking, I'm kind of questioning, I don't question because I have, I don't know, all the financial logistics, but you're increasing a number of people's taxes by 66%. I'm paying 66% more in taxes, and I'm sure other people are, so we could afford it last year, you know?
No, we couldn't.
You couldn't.
We afforded it last year by taking money that we had spent years trying to put aside to fill the hole. So over the last few years, your taxes, and this is something that we talked about, is that your taxes could have gone up incrementally. Or we tried to keep them stable for a few years so that you didn't keep going up and up on those tougher years. We became out of compliance with what the state regulations are, so we had to reassess those properties. And unfortunately, a lot of those properties are worth a ton more. The house I currently live in in 2016 was $120,000. That house would sell today for $120,000. That house would sell today for around $320,000.
And I'm not disputing the assessment, you know, the assessed values, well, I received them, seemed reasonable. But what I thought was unreasonable for a lot of folks was a huge increase in, from one year to the next. And that's what this is, it's not disputing the assessment, it's saying, okay, I'll pay my fair share amount of taxes, but just cheaper's Christmas, less people have a chance to adjust their lifestyles, maybe get a different type of heat source or something so that they can afford the damn taxes.
Yeah, we recognize that. We really do recognize that. And for those who have been following what's been discussed here at the council for three years since before the pandemic, you'll recognize that we saw this coming, just as Jay mentioned. We knew that there was going to be an increase in tax and there was a concerted effort during the really uncertain times and at the height of the pandemic to try to maintain the tax levels so that people could feel stable during that and not feel like too many things were moving at once in their lives. But to do that, to maintain that stability for people, which was unsustainable in the long term, right? Like, I mean, we were, you know, stealing from Peter to pay Paul kind of thing. We were eroding at our fund balance to do that, to maintain stable taxes for the city. But if you go back and you watch all those meetings, Jay and other counselors here were, we discussed that a lot. It was something that we struggled with, we struggled with. And we sought input from the community on this, on this very question. And this was the, that was the decision that we made. And Jay in particular was very forthright about saying, this is what's going to happen when, you know, we're gonna, there's gonna come a time when reassessment comes around that the taxes will jump so that we can be in line with the costs, the ballooning costs of the city. Because the city is facing the same sort of inflationary pressures that everybody is facing.
I understand that.
It's not like we become exceptionally more, you know, spend-thrift here in the city. It's just.
A misconception.
We're trying, we're trying to like maintain the services, but we were also aware that people were going through a very difficult economic time, a lot of uncertainty. Some people were losing their jobs or were uncertain about their employment during that period. So we wanted to try to maintain some stability from that. And we've come through that, that process, but, you know, this is the difficult pill that we talked about as a city that we were going to have to swallow to be able to maintain. So I, I think everyone here is very sympathetic and sensitive to the pressures that all people in Waterville are facing, right? Everybody up here pays property taxes too. And so, yeah, it's a continuing conversation. It's a continuing conversation. And we appreciate feedback from the community on this. And we do, you know, we're not going to rule ideas out of hand, but it has to be put within the context of the limitations that we have and the objectives that we have. Because we do, we are, the city is on a positive trajectory and we want to maintain that momentum as well, but not unduly put it on the backs of the taxpayers.
Okay. Well, that's, if nothing else, it's been education.
Yeah.
Keep coming. Please keep coming.
Have a nice day.
And go ahead.
Couple of things. First of all, I'd like you to invite you all to a fundraiser for Starfish Village, which is happening on the 9th of November. It's a movie called Shoe Shine Caddy, which I sponsored this year at MEF and saw it twice. And the filmmaker, Leonard Manzella, said that he did not want, he had decided not to release it for commercial purposes, but he wanted it to be used for education and discussion and fundraising. And so we were talking to him after the film and telling him about Starfish Village, and he offered it to us at no cost. And we will also, there's also a raffle going on and 50/50 raffle and a, we're going to have some door prizes. And I have.
Love that everybody's coming to get today with, so prepared with all these materials. It's fun. Thank you, ma'am.
And I forgot to say, it's about a homeless gentleman. And the filmmaker followed him for 14 months. And at the end of the film, there'll be a short interview that I did with both Leonard and the subject, Adrian. Okay. So I, before I come to a city council meeting, I look at the agenda. And I don't see anything on there about the money that was requested to be considered for the Winslow Community Cupboard or for the Waterville Area Soup Kitchen. And so I'd like to know where that is.
So last, at the last meeting, when Councilor Frankie asked for this to be on the agenda, I don't think he realized that the call had gone out for the ARPA funds. And we do have a process for taking applications. It did come up at the meeting last time. We recognize that these organizations, that food insecurity is a big, big issue in our community and that we have many agencies who are working hard. But we are going to go through the process and then we're going to allocate the funds.
And if I am correct, those funds are limited to $10,000 for each, up to $10,000 for each organization, correct?
That was, those were the terms that the ARPA committee decided on, yes. And that was, that was the, the call for proposals that went out, that was stated.
Okay.
So it's, I think it's unfair to change the parameters of a call that's in process.
Okay. But at the last meeting, we heard a lot of, a lot of information about how desperate both those organizations are. And the, the, the application period, you know, is, ends on November 1st. Then it will take some time to decide who gets what.
Right.
And I'm concerned that, that the Waterville, the Winslow Community Cupboard is not going to be able to sustain what it now does. And the Waterville Area Soup Kitchen, as Carly said last week or last meeting, gets some of their, you know, foodstuffs from, from Bruce. And, you know, I, when it was talked about to spend $100,000 for this, you know, this building, I supported it and I still do. But I do not understand why, when entity brings so much food into Waterville and other places, why, and is saying, help. And other communities, other communities support the Winslow Community Cupboard.
So, you know, once the process, once the deadline has passed, something the council can do and something that the ARPA committee can do is expedite the process of making recommendations. And then, and then we can determine based on the information that we receive in writing from the organizations to, to make a decision. But it's, we're talking about a couple of weeks. And so, you know, I don't think that's a huge amount of time. If, you know, surely, surely the, these organizations can hang on for a couple of weeks, you know? But we heard you and we are, we are also concerned about food insecurity. And we will look at these applications and do everything we can. The other thing that we'd like to do is bring together the groups for a conversation about how we can work together more efficiently so that we are all cooperating to provide the best service to people in Waterville and, and the area who are hungry. And that's a meeting that will be called shortly.
It must be frustrating to talk about something and not see any action. The problem is that we were already in the process of doing something. You're not going to supersede that process and make other partners feel like they're not as valuable. The second part of that is, we've had lots of other internal discussions on figuring out how best to help transport that food, because I hear that the transportation piece is a big part of it. And how we can engage our other partners to sort of help make those deliveries for the cupboard. So although you haven't seen a monetary contribution yet, I'm sure at some point it's more than likely going to come, is that there's a bunch of people that all want money. And how do you assess without a process, who's going to get those? And I'm sorry, if you're an organization that is a week or two away from collapse, there's something else more, more important going on than just money. So we want to make sure that the money we do give out to our partners is going to be used as it's intended, not saying that it wouldn't at the Winslow, at the Cupboard, but we have to weigh everyone equally. And once that initial process is done, I'd still come back and ask for more money. Because then you're not in the middle of an already established process. Currently, it's a, it's an equal playing field for everyone. Once we're done, if we see a need somewhere else that we didn't fill, that's a discussion to have. But we're talking about three or four weeks. And if these organizations can't hold on for three or four weeks, something else is going on.
There has been unprecedented increase in food and other living expenses, as we all know. That affects the organizations. And I was at a part of the Action Coalition meeting last Thursday when Dean from the Soup Kitchen shared with us that per meal, they spend $3.24. That doesn't sound to me like they're not using resources well. And I hope that no money will be spent on a consultant that I understand was suggested in an email that was shared with me, Mike. And in that email, you talked about maybe we can't, the organizations can't, can't serve everybody. I have one question for you. Are you going to be the person at the Soup Kitchen or at the Winslow Community Cupboard that tells people, sorry, can't have any food today?
Good evening, I'm Reverend Maureen Osbrook. I want to, I want to thank Bill Post for answering my email in a very timely and thorough way. After this last, at the last council meeting, there was a meeting of Starfish Village and the Interfaith Council, and we were confused about some numbers. There were bandied around about how many, how much money was in the ARPA fund, how much money the committee had to deal with. We were legitimately confused. And I just want to say, because I had heard things I didn't like, that at no time have we ever felt adverse to the ARPA committee. As you all know, and most of you know me, I can argue until the cows come home. I don't mind a good, solid argument, but I don't hold that against anybody. I mean, we're all in this together, and that's what I totally believe. But the one thing I want to say, and maybe this is the place, because I'm, I'm getting a little even more confused. So in Bill's wonderful reply to me, he did affirm that there is an ARPA balance of $800,000. So the thing I would suggest to you, and process aside, because the problem with process, having worked with many in my life, is we set them up and we don't know what's coming down the road. So just like a commodity trader, you don't want to fall in love with your position, although exactly as Jay says, you do not want to look unfair. And so these, these are absolutely equal things. But I guess I would say this, I was, I'm going back to when I was before you, asking for some help to open a soup kitchen, before the Waterville Area Soup Kitchen was able to step up and do the wonderful work they do. You offered me $15,000 money that would be for leasing space in Waterville. At the time, we couldn't find the space. And my understanding is that money came out of a line item budgeted number set up for those kinds of things. So could we not, one, either look at that money as some emergency funding? Or I might suggest the $50,000, though I would love dearly to have $15,000, is a very small sum when you're talking about $800,000. So what then, and I don't know, I'm putting this in your hands and doing it trustfully, what can we do? Because I can tell you right now that there are, yes, there are a lot of people, a lot of agencies, a lot of services that will want assistance, but just like, they're not equal. So that is something to weigh. But I would like you to. But I would like you to seriously consider, between now and the next council meeting, how you can kick out some segment of that $800,000 as emergency funding, doing it without it being any aspersion on anybody's ability to run a service that they have been running from the ground up incredibly efficiently for a long time, and probably none of you have ever set foot at what Bruce is running in Winslow, which looks like the Berlin airlift is so efficient, and here in Waterville at the Lighthouse. So I would just ask you to consider that. I don't know the process for that, but my ask is, if I can, if you can motion that, if, whatever that is, would you please consider looking at that $800,000 and either adding it to the ARPA committee funding, or kicking it out in some other way, or whatever that amount of money is still in your budget? Thank you very much for listening.
That's precisely what I was saying a couple of minutes ago. Once this process ends, nothing stops it, which is in literally 12 days.
So you will, so you'll take the, look at this.
Then that money is sitting there to use for other stuff.
That $800,000 we're talking about?
The $800,000 was always earmarked for the most vulnerable of our.
Can we put that $800,000 in the $50,000 that the ARPA committee is using? I mean, that's got nothing to do with the process. If we adhere to the process, which I respect, can we say to the ARPA committee, "You know what? We're going to give you a little more money, we're going to give you, we're going to fund it more from that $800,000"? I think that's what we should be doing, Jay.
It's a conversation now.
Okay, thank you.
All right, anyone else?
I'm, I'm actually, I'm going to weigh in. Sorry, I'm going to weigh in, because I think, I think that Reverend Mo made a really great point on having like a flex funding in order for the city to do stuff like this, besides the ARPA fund. So going forward, I do like the idea of having some flex funding, just in case something happens. Because I understand the process, but I do understand that, you know, we are coming off of pandemic, so we are lingering stuff from the pandemic, so we need to be a little bit flexible. So just wanted to echo that.
They're in a category of people or organizations that are in the middle of vying for money. So you can't then take this one group and just exclude them from everything else.
No, I'm not saying that, I'm not saying.
And then move on.
No, I'm not saying that. I, I do agree with the process, I agree with the process. But what I'm saying, after those funds are gone, we need to actually have more flex funding. We need to create more flex funding for things like this.
Agreed. Anyone else? Moving on to old biz, consent agenda.
Move to adopt.
Second.
I have a brief amendment to the minutes that I'd like to move. Something that was brought to my attention, very minor but significant addition. Under number three, the city manager's report, it should read... Basically, there was a figure of $2 million, and it just says two. So we just need the am now. Yeah, thank you.
Anyone else? All in favor?
So moved.
One second.
Any more discussion? All in favor? All right. Moving on to old business. Order 164-2023.
Would we like to make a motion to read by title only?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Thank you. Order 164-2023, accept a 2023 community paramedic grant.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Any discussion? I'm still waiting for the.
Does the chief have anything to add?
Anything you want to say, chief? Oh, you can go over there if you want.
Well, I'm already here.
All right.
The only thing I want to do is thank the council, the city manager, the assistant city manager for the support in this grant. I am pleased to say we did secure a primary care physician that is, that is being provided by Northern Light Hospital since the last meeting. And assuming that this vote passes, we will be able to get a Tahoe. We're fighting amongst three communities, but as long as I give a head nod tomorrow, we'll secure that. So those are the only updates.
Chief, you said you had a physician that's going to be assisting with like, say, for instance, like traveling with you guys, is that what?
So in this particular case, the community paramedic grant requires that we have a primary care physician medical director. So a physician that is specifically functioning in the background to provide us with education and quality improvement. So when we go out and actually interact with patients, any of the reporting or questions or over the phone instructions, we'll have somebody operating in the background.
Sounds good.
And again, that's, that's, if you think about the time and energy that a physician is going to commit to this program, and you, you translate that to a monetary value, Northern Light's really stepping, stepping to the plate here, so my hat's off to them.
Hey, chief, this, this is a, an emergency physician or an internist, or what, what kind of physician?
Primary care physician.
Just a primary care.
Yep, so again, we have Dr. Payne. Dr. Payne is our medical director that oversees our emergency treatment. But specifically for this program, because this, this goes from an emergent setting more to a non-emergent setting, it requires a different specialty. So therefore, Maniums requires us have a PCP medical director that overlooks this particular standard of care. So it's just another layer to prove that the, the quality of care that the community is receiving is, is nothing less than top notch.
Nice. Anyone else? All in favor? I can't vote, but.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to new business. Resolution 169-2023.
Refer to the planning board zoning map amendment 137 Water Street.
Move to adopt. Second.
Any discussion? Patty, which ones, what is this, 137 Water Street?
I'm sorry, bud.
Oh, that's the one that's moving to commercial, right?
Hello, my name is Barry Dolly, I own 137 Water Street. I would like to build a shed to store my lumber over there. As it stands right now, it's commercially zoned, which doesn't permit installing a shed. I'm requesting a zoning change to have it zoned to a residential type zone, so that I may install my shed.
Going residential, I thought it was commercial.
Correct, it's currently zoned commercial. I'm requesting a zone change to residential.
Water Street, from KFC all the way up to where his property is, where Dick's Variety used to be, is all commercial.
I, I know his house, I, I thought it was two different versions, two different versions of commercial, and you're going to put it all in one.
Why don't we have the planning director could speak?
Anne, can you explain it to him? We're sick of me.
His property is in two different zones. One of his properties is in the commercial B zone, and the rear of his property is in the residential C zone. So he's asking to have the whole property.
In residential.
In residential C, and it's only a question of setback requirements.
Will he get more flexibility when we do that?
Well, he won't be able to put a, a business in there, but he'll be able to have a shed, which is what he wants.
He'll still be able to run a, like, an office out of his house and stuff, right? Because he is a business.
Home occupation.
Okay, I just want to make sure. I don't, I'm not trying to zone you out of being able to do what you're currently already doing. Because I know the house, and I know the, it's, I don't know if you guys pass by, but it's a shed that's got like the fence on top of it, it's pretty clean. So.
So that was my question, you're not operating a business currently, it's a residential use?
I, I own the business out of, but I don't operate the business out of the property.
Right.
My, my work is elsewhere, it's always offsite.
Okay, yep.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? All in favor? Enjoy the puzzles. He's always playing Rubik's Cube, big guy. Resolution 170-2023.
Creation of a police department vehicles and equipment reserve account.
Move to adopt.
Second.
I think this is on.
Hello, Jay. Jay. This is an item that has not been reviewed either by the finance committee or by the public safety working group. I would move to table this until those groups have had a chance to take a look at this.
Anyone else?
Is that a motion?
That's a motion, yes.
Second. All in favor of Claude's motion?
Oh, yeah, can we hear and then make a motion?
Want to give a motion?
Yeah, you have a motion on the table, you have to.
I moved, I moved, I moved to table.
Could I, could I speak to the motion? I'm just.
No, because you can speak to the table motion.
Right, that's right.
The, the reason I motioned it to table was because this has not been considered by either the finance committee or the public safety working group, two council groups that should have considered this before it was brought to council.
That's well and good, perhaps tabling it is the correct way forward, but is it not in the best interest of the council to get as much information as we can? We have people here that are ready to speak to it. Can we delay the table, put the table down, and then table it at the end of a little bit of discussion? If, if, if the table is warranted, it seems like this is an opportunity to learn about it. What's the point of tabling it to later if we're not getting an opportunity to learn about the resolution now? I mean, I'm happy to table it, but I would just like to.
Well, the reason I put the table on the motion, I put the motion to table on the floor is because I think it's important for us to stay with standard procedure and do regular business the way it should be done. One of the things that I disliked about the prior city manager was the surprise resolutions that would pop up at council meetings without having been properly vetted. And this has been something that I have been spoken about ever since I was elected to council. I just think that we need to stay with regular, the regular order of business.
Just a comment or recommendation for, you know, building off of these comments. It may be wise, and one thing I've noticed since I've been here for, the council to adopt a rules and order of business document that clearly spells out and lays out these procedures, because that does not exist currently. You know, a standing committee versus a working group versus, there are many layers here that I've noticed. And there is a lack of written or standardized procedures with these. And I'm not pointing fingers anywhere, I'm not casting blame anywhere, but I think it's my recommendation that we develop a council rules and order of business document that clearly spells out these procedures, then there's no debate or ambiguity about how these things were handled.
Yeah, I, I like that, when you say "we," what do you mean "we"? Who is that, who is the "we" there? Where, how, how would we go about developing that?
We, the council, I mean, perhaps staff could take a stab at proposing something that you guys can add or edit or debate, whatever you'd like. Can we come up with a document that addresses all these issues and really makes everything concrete? So these things never come up as far as what needs to go to a committee first, what needs to go to a working group first, what working groups are actual standing working groups that we have. I'll be honest, right now, it's a bit, you know, all over the place. And that's one thing I've just noticed. I think we should bring order, I think we should bring standardized procedure here, and we should get going on that.
Yeah, well, would it be possible for the city staff or administration to draft something like that up for our consideration? And send it to some kind of working group or committee?
Maybe not for the next meeting, but we could definitely get on, on working on that.
Thank you for mentioning that, Brian. I, what I wanted to say is that I, I agree with Councilor Klepak that it's at least worth hearing from Officer Woods to see if this is even, even warrants further discussion outside the council meeting, which is where we do our business primarily. So I, I don't think we should table this item without at least hearing about what it entails, and we did get a memo on it.
All in favor of tabling or his motion? All opposed?
Okay, so Frankie and McCormick were in favor, so... So two were in favor and five opposed.
Go ahead, sir.
All right, so what we're seeking here is a vehicle equipment in reserve account. So as we, we already talked about the enterprise thing at the last meeting, and as part of that deal, they're going to be selling three of our cruisers. What they're going to do when they sell those cruisers is they're going to cut us a paper check essentially for the value that they sell the vehicles for. And we want this account to be able to put that money into and have it roll over next year, and then use that next year towards the police vehicle budget. Additionally, something that kind of popped up recently in conversations at the police department, we discovered it by accident. We have, we do special details. Last week, or a week or two ago, we had a construction company call and ask us if we could provide, you know, police services cruiser with flashing blue lights and an officer at the, on the, you know, the construction detail on the side of the road. In the discussion I was having with him, he asked, you know, "What do you charge? What's the hourly rate?" So I told him, you know, "It's $80 an hour for an officer to, to come out there and do that for you." He asked me, "What's the rental fee for the cruiser?", which we don't have a rental fee for the cruiser, we just provide that as part of the special detail. So he got telling me that down in southern Maine, they charge for the, a rental fee for the cruiser for those, as well as they charge, you know, for the officer's salary. So that got me thinking, why aren't we doing that as well? They are using our equipment as well as our officer. And the example he gave me was, because he had just done one the week before in Scarborough, they charge $80 an hour for the officer and an additional $80 an hour for the cruiser. I was just talking to the fire chief about that, I saw, thought that that was high, and he told me that it's absolutely not high to charge $80 for the rental of the cruiser. But that money that we gain from the rental of the cruiser could also go into this account to potentially offset the budget. And then having this money in reserve in, in that account, a good example of what that could be used for is if, you know, a police vehicle is totaled in an accident, the, the value of the police cruiser depreciates so rapidly because they're on the road 24 hours, seven days a week, that, you know, we would get maybe $20,000 or $30,000 for the vehicle if it's a year or two old, you know, depending on the age of the vehicle. But it's going to cost the city close to $60,000 to purchase and outfit a new vehicle with equipment. So we end up having to come back to the city council and say, "Hey, we, you know, we have an emergency, we're down a car because it's been totaled. We need $20,000 or $30,000 extra dollars because the insurance didn't cover the whole cost of replacing this vehicle." If we have a cruiser reserve account where we're getting money from these special details and from the sale of the other vehicles, we could have money on hand to replace that vehicle without needing to come back to the city council and ask for additional funds.
This is precisely why this is a matter that should have been brought at least to the finance committee. This is precisely why this is a matter that should have been brought at least to the Finance Committee, if not to the Public Safety Working Group. There are very little in terms of specifics to this, we don't know what the impact is on the budget, how the money's going to be spent, this is just a slush fund and this is one of the things that we have run into continuously since I've been on council, is these special funds that nobody quite knows what they're doing. They just sit out there and the department heads come up with special perks from time to time that they think is appropriate. I'm totally opposed to any kind of special fund. I have been consistently opposed to special funds since joining council and I think this is definitely the wrong time to do this. But I do appreciate the work that the police have done and I am fully in support of their operations.
I'm for the cruiser thing, I'm for this fund, but I would like to see them go back, table it and set it up so that it's similar to what the fire chief has with his ambulance thing. That's, and before we just go willy-nilly, okay, this is what it is, this is what's going to be going to it, can they take drug forfeiture money, put it in there? The rental for cruisers and stuff? It needs to be cleaned up, it's too vague right now. That's why I was supporting Claude with the second on this table. It's too vague, too open-ended, clean up the loose ends and bring it back. I want him to get his rental stuff going, I'm for that, that's going to save us some money. But before we go any farther with this, send it to the committee or whoever that has been put together for this purpose and have them do their due diligence, have them do their thing and bring it back to us, cleaned up, neat, tidy, no questions asked, no problems.
Does the officer have a response to that?
I don't really know what the police, the fire chief has for our program, so I don't really know how to speak to that.
So I don't think this sounds, first of all, that different from the ambulance reserve fund. It's a matter of taking the proceeds from a vehicle, from vehicle sales from the police department and putting them in a reserve fund, which is a way of planning and budgeting for the needs coming up. The one piece of this particular resolution that I'm unclear about is putting funds from something that we're not yet charging for into the fund. So I think that needs to be separated out of it. I hear that we're putting funds from the sale of vehicles and then also detail fees. Is that correct?
So we're not putting, we don't even charge a detail fee right now, that's just a future use of this fund that we potentially see, you know, to continue to try to offset the, you know, the cruiser budget.
So based on that, to me, this seems very straightforward if we're just taking funds from the sale of vehicles and putting them towards a fund that would pay for new vehicles as needed.
I follow along with what you're saying, but even the eighty dollars that you get for the rental of the vehicle is vehicle-related, so it's not.
Sure, but we're not, we're not charging for that yet, we're charging.
It's a potential use.
It's a possibility that would revision.
Absolutely.
So we do, I agree with Councilor McCormick, we need to be clear about what the fees are that are going into this fund.
It would just be for vehicles, right? It would be like a forfeiture fund, we're not going to, you know, downtown to a restaurant, vehicle funds, money from the vehicles going into this to purchase at the end of a police vehicle's life.
Correct.
I mean, it's important.
There was a second component to that, the second component was the detail fees for both the officer and the use of the vehicle during the fee, which is, would be added into that. And I wanted to hear exactly what the proposal was for the detail fees because I wasn't aware that we did charge them. So I think it's not a bad idea, but it's not something that we could probably approve today. And now hearing that, I would make a motion to table this and push this to one of the committees to draft a document to bring to the council that states these are the parameters, these are the limits that we're going to put in there and at a certain point it's going to go back into the general, if that's what's determined like we did with the ambulance fund. So at this point I would make the motion, or after the discussion, that we would table this, to have that discussion, understand those parameters and bring back a document that the council could adopt for this particular program.
Do we agree that the Finance Committee seems to be the most logical place for?
Yeah, I don't see why not, like, I mean, it sticks at one half, doesn't it, another? I think if we put it to the Public Safety Committee, I think it's, I think Finance Committee is fine as well, so.
What is, is there a time component to this decision at all? Can you discuss that?
Well, the only time component would be probably, because right now we're expecting Enterprise to deliver the five cruisers and take possession of our three sometime in December.
So we have time.
So, you know, that's when they would be cutting us the check and at this point we would have no place to put that money.
So we have two council meetings yet, so if we were to run it through committee, we could potentially get it back, a resolution to move. So I'd be second if we give them.
Absolutely.
Claude.
In terms of where the money would go from the sale of the cruisers, I would point out that the cruisers were originally bought from the general fund. The money that we've authorized to lease the new vehicles has come from the general fund. The police department budget, in fact, works entirely off of the general fund. Consequently, the money from the sale of cruisers would normally go back into the general fund. This is, this is pretty basic finance stuff. If you take money out of the general fund, you don't need it all, it goes back into the general fund. We just raised taxes and we've got people asking us to spend more money, so. I mean, we can't keep playing around with our finances, that's all.
It's not lost on me that earlier in the meeting, we were told how important process is, okay? Sounds like there's some process that hasn't been adhered to or is sort of fuzzy.
Quite the contrary, yeah, we don't have the process, which is what the city manager told us here. For this particular, for this particular, in this scenario.
For this particular thing, okay, but.
This is the way that Councilor Frankie would like to see it go, but there is no explicitly stated process for this to happen. This is just how he would like to see it happen.
I think you're wrong, Councilor Klepak, we have a Finance Committee that's supposed to meet regularly to deal with finances of the city, this is a finance issue for the city and I'm extremely upset that the Finance Committee has not taken this up before it's been brought before council.
Well, there's no process to do so, everything comes to the council first. Everything comes to you guys first and then you send it to somewhere else, be it the planning board, any, everything always comes to council.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, but you know that that's not, that's not the way it works at all. Finance, finance stuff comes to the Finance Committee before it comes to council, always, always.
So I'll make a motion, let's send it to the Finance Committee.
Bye, second.
Done and done.
All in here?
Was that unanimous?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, officer.
Resolution, oh, go ahead.
So, can we just get some clarification on what the Finance Committee will determine? I mean, clearly.
They're going to vet the ideas, follow the process.
Yeah. Okay, all right.
I'm sure it cut out that second clause in the first paragraph.
Yeah, there, okay.
Resolution 171, 2023.
Adoption of a downtown vision plan and implementation strategy.
Move to adopt.
So, yeah, I'll just open this up, as I said in my manager's report, this has been a long process, a lot of work, a lot of input, a lot of great community input and support. There is a final document including your packet, sort of laying out our next steps. There's a few different categories, sort of, as I mentioned, the things that we can accomplish in the near term, related just on the city side, there's a category of what we can work with community partners on and then also another category that's really for the implementation committee. And this implementation committee will need to be created and filled and this committee will then, like my committees vetting ideas, we'll vet these proposals and carry this forward and make recommendations back on how do we accomplish these longer, more ambitious term goals. And there is some, you know, idea of having this committee being filled with some people with some areas of expertise in these areas to help us along. And so I think that's the final culmination, the final product of this long process. The full report is also attached in your packet, but a lot of great work by a lot of people, a lot of great community input, I think it's something we can really be proud of and really something that is going to seriously shape the future of this downtown and this city. So I think the staff and the consultants and everyone who's worked on this project is recommending adoption and as I said, we are looking forward to getting going and really showing the community this was a serious plan with a lot of serious input and we're here to chart our new future.
Well, I certainly think that the, I agree wholeheartedly with the comments of the city manager that it's a process that was, where there was a lot of community input and I think the final recommendations are a great place to start in terms of moving toward the revitalization of downtown Waterville. What I would suggest is we think about putting together this, the recommended committee. Do we want to have a group of councilors and/or the mayor work with the city manager to bring something before council in the next, maybe not the next meeting, but certainly the meeting after that?
I think that's a good idea.
I'd be happy to volunteer.
Same.
Anyone else?
I'll do it.
So volunteering to have a committee to set up the committee?
Well, either that, Rebecca, or I can just write up a craft committee and we can, everybody could just agree to what Claude proposes.
Well, I think that, I think that city staff.
I was being facetious, Rebecca.
I think that, yeah, I realize that, I think that city staff, having been involved in a lot of the meetings, all of the meetings, I think the city staff should be involved and the people who are on the committee should be involved in, we've discussed a little bit about what that committee should look like, so. You know, I think it is important to have a discussion about it, but we do want to get moving on the plan as well. So having a committee to plan the committee seems a little bit like more process than we need. Brian, could you speak to that? What are your thoughts on?
Yeah, I just work here, you guys make the decisions.
You know he was apologizing for it, right?
That was a deft move, but you're our professional advisor, so what do you think?
You know, I think there was some discussion in the group with BBV about the formation of the committee. You know, I think there is more kind of work to be done there on how this committee process or formation is going to happen. I guess the idea at that level was the council would kind of discuss also, or maybe you could take a subset of you and discuss, you know, the best way to, you know, to form this committee. You know, but it will then be, you know, I think just the criteria, the appointment process, kind of just the actual powers of this committee, there's still a lot to work out there. So, yeah, I think there's, I guess the bottom line is there's still a lot to vet and we want to make sure it's obviously a fair process and it's an inclusive process, so. You know, is the answer a subcommittee of the council, maybe? Or I guess the full council could also, this could be a future agenda item when the full council, you know, takes a stab at it. Or there could be a staff recommendation and then the full council takes, you know, a stab at it. But, yeah, there's a lot more to discuss here on the committee formation and the appointment process.
The reason I suggested is so that we don't just adopt the recommendations and it gets put on the shelf in City Hall somewhere and we say, why didn't we ever do something about that? So just trying to keep the ball rolling. But if we, you know, it could be an agenda item, a discussion item for the next, the next meeting and we're always great at those kinds of freewheeling discussions.
I'm just kidding, the committee is dealing with those items in category number three. So these are the longer-term things, they're going to require more thought, more vision, but we're not talking about, you know, putting in some benches on Appleton Street. That's a go, you know, in the near term. So just to clarify that, we're talking about the long-range aspects of this plan.
Yeah, and this committee is likely to begin its work in December, in the new year, probably in the new year after the election.
I think the new year is perfectly fine, because, you know, we have lots of things in category one and two to deal with, you know, in the near term and this is really a long-range, almost like a long-range planning committee with this thing.
Yeah, yeah. Any other discussion? All in favor?
All right, so we're going to waive cloture for Resolution 172.
2023.
There's a motion, is there a second?
I'm sorry, I don't have anything else on my, on my agenda.
It was emailed to everybody earlier.
It got sent here to waive cloture.
I can read it if you'd like, Mayor.
Well, I'm sorry, the, I don't think the public has anything else on their agenda either.
It couldn't be added to the agenda. It was something that was discussed today, which is why it was sent to all the councils for you guys to have a discussion and we have Todd here at the moment, so there's a motion on the floor.
Excuse me, but that's not the regular order of business, if it's not on the agenda as announced to the public, then somebody has to make a motion to waive cloture.
Claude, you just did.
She just did.
And there's a second.
She said, she said a resolution, I didn't hear any cloture motion.
She made a motion to waive cloture for the resolution.
For the resolution, okay.
And there was a second. So should I read the item first or should we just?
The cloture motion's on the table.
Correct.
It's a two-thirds vote, correct?
Correct. We need five. So shall we just make them, do the vote to waive cloture and then I'll read the item after? Or would you like to know what the item is first, before you decide whether to waive cloture?
I think cloture is what's on the table. I think closure is what's on the table. I think we need to start sticking to procedure, thank you.
Okay, so the motion on the floor is whether to waive closure.
Go ahead.
Is there a vote?
All in favor.
There was a second.
All in favor.
All those in favor? And opposed? Six to one. The item is authorize the use of funds, be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Waterville as follows, that the City Council authorizes the City Manager and Community Outreach Coordinator to spend up to $10,000 to supply yurts, heating source, and fencing at the Riverwalk area where the encampment currently is located, be it further resolved that these funds will come from the general fund. Is there a motion to adopt?
I motion to adopt.
Second.
Todd?
So, as most of you are aware, you know, I've been working with the unhoused population.
Would you identify?
Who are you?
I'm sorry.
Todd Stevens is the Community Outreach Coordinator. So in working with the unhoused population, you know, really been trying to identify both short-term crisis needs, as I, you know, define them, and long-term needs. We, the council has heard multiple times about the need for affordable housing, and that's not something we can make happen overnight. But in working with the population down there, and Council of DeBerto has been at the soup kitchen for the last three weeks, listening to different ideas, and today was our first, what we deemed a listening session. I walked the trail, and I asked people, come participate and let us know what you need. It doesn't do any good for anybody on the council, myself, or anybody else to tell people what they need. We need to hear from them what their primary concerns are, and we had a pretty good turnout today. It ranged everywhere from basic hygiene products to a recovery center and transitional housing. So one of the things that was discussed after the fact, after the meeting, is that we have roughly 40 people, if I had to guess, which is hard to determine, currently living on the trail of Head of Falls. I recently walked that trail with a railroad police officer, trying to move people off railroad property to be a good neighbor. One of the things we're encountering down there is there are people who are not part of that community that are coming down to Head of Falls on a consistent basis, that are driving into that area, they're kicking up rocks towards the unhoused that are down there. But what we hear is, oh, another incident at Head of Falls with the unhoused, when it wasn't them who started it. So the Police Department and City Public Works have placed barricades up to stop traffic into that area. I've been working, if I see people down there that are not abiding by that, I'm letting the Police Department know so they can address it and they can keep the problem causers out of the area. Unfortunately, right now, as we come into winter and talks with the homeless shelter, the warming center is not going to be adequate. There is not enough space in the warming center. So, you know, we discussed what is a way for us to address the short-term, the winter? You know, the people living in tents that are not four-season tents. Are there going to be people who are going to attempt to make it through the winter out there? Absolutely. We don't want that. We don't want to have people trying to do something because they have no other option. But we also understand the community as a whole, I've heard it down there. You know, they don't want to view the unhoused. They have their own perceptions and issues. So as we discussed, there's a fence around the Police Department that has privacy lattice in it. So the thought of putting that at the north end, where there's a little pump house that the unhoused are actually utilizing now with the help of Public Works, to put their trash there, because they are cleaning it up. To put something across there with a gate that the Police Department, the Fire Department has access to, so that they can get in to deal with medical emergencies, to overdoses, whatever may be going on down there, allow the Police Department access. And providing a yurt, a tent, a four-season dwelling for the people who have to try to ride it out. Providing that barrier between them and the people that don't want to see them, or the people who are causing them issues down there.
It's big.
It's huge. There's a car show that takes place every Wednesday night, and the Police Department's down there monitoring, but they're kicking up rocks. They're doing burnouts, and the only way that we can protect the people that are down there, who, as I stand here, they have been my biggest ally. You know, people have talked about the work that I've done. I don't do the work without them. You know, they're the ones, when provided the rakes and shovels, are cleaning up their trash. Is there a lot of work to be done? Absolutely. But they're doing it, and they're not doing it for any other reason than wanting to work with us, wanting to work with the city.
And it's their home.
It's their home, and they do take pride in it. Are there mental health and substance abuse issues? Absolutely. But in talking to some of the other mental health liaisons or outreach people in other cities, the biggest problem to actually getting them help and getting them off the homeless encampments is the cities that are moving them all around, and the outreach workers are saying, how can I provide services to somebody I can't find? So is it the best-case scenario? No, it's not. But they're gonna be down there anyway. They're already on the trail, and we gotta port a party down there for them with the expectation of you're gonna treat it properly, and the first time it's mistreated, I'm gonna call Public Works, and Matt's gonna have it hauled out of here. It's clean, it's taken care of, they're reaching out to me when it needs to be serviced. They're reaching out to me when people are violating the barricades. They don't want the trouble. Are there mental health and substance abuse issues? Absolutely. No one's turning a blind eye to that. But if we can keep them there, it gives the Fire Department, with their new community paramedic program, what better way to get the people the help that they need than having them where they can find them? Case managers are now going down there and accessing these individuals. That's a step to get them the help that they need. It's an ask. It absolutely is. And I know that there's gonna be pushback, you know, why are we doing this for the unhoused? But we talk about community, and the community is not the people who live on the south end or the north end, who attend Colby. The community is all of those people, plus the unhoused. And I had someone from the Kenebeck Mesolonski Trail System ask me, and, you know, what would you see for the trails, the trail system? It's remembering that you can't sit anywhere, whether it's on the council or for an agency, and say, we want this for our community, and not include the unhoused people, because they are this community. Most of them have been in this community far longer than I have. They have issues, they have stories. Unfortunately, people don't take the time to hear what those stories are, or they don't care. But that doesn't mean we as a city can't do something to get through the crisis and buy ourselves some additional time come the spring to say, okay, we've got through the winter, now it's a long-term plan. Most of you are aware, the event that we held down at Head of Falls, nobody else in the state has done it. And most of those people, now, we have agencies, and Carla can attest to it, we have agencies now that are going to the soup kitchen and providing time there for people to sign up for services. And they're, they have signed up for services. It's not gonna change tonight, but my vision is, you know, if we can do something different, and we obviously have to look at liability and things on the city, but.
Yeah, no woodstoves.
We can, we can, we can make a difference. And I want to be able to look at cities like Portland, cities like Bangor, and challenge them to say, we've done it this way for decades, and it hasn't worked. So while there are a lot of people, a lot of businesses and agencies that are looking for funds and need funds, at some point, we also have to look at those individual community members, and if we can help pick them up, maybe they're the next person that says, I'm gonna reach my hand out and help this, this community partner.
In all the discussion, and I was there with Flavia this morning, and we don't want to be the town that keeps pushing people everywhere else, like moving from one encampment to another, to another, to another. And Portland, a couple of years ago, I was sitting in front of City Hall, people move, have their residents move, they are residents, they live here. A lot of them come from other places, but once they get here, they are ours. And if they're being, we can keep them in a central location where we can get them the services that they need. We can mitigate and try to keep them warm during the winter, so that we can continue to build on the momentum that Todd has already created. We're doing stuff with our homeless population that other towns aren't even thinking about right now. So instead of trying to figure out a way to sort of copy what other people are doing, it's sort of uncharted. And I don't think a lot of people are out there buying four-season yurts to keep their residents safe. We, people are getting their tents cut, people are going down there and terrorizing them. If we can put up that fence, we have routine patrols down there, they've built trust with Todd, Todd is able to go down there. People from Options go down there, and they make sure that nobody needs Narcan or anything else. Like you've started to make a difference, and we've talked about years, what we're gonna do with our homeless population in the winter. Well, for $10,000, you have an opportunity to do something for them this winter. We don't have to keep talking about it. We can try something and see if it works, and if it does, Todd has the ability to further that in the spring, all the while keeping our most vulnerable warm. Go ahead.
Yes, I think it's a great job that you're doing, the wonderful work that you're doing. My objection, as I've been objecting all night, is process. This is something that we talked about last year. And we got through last year, it got warm again, so we stopped talking about it. We haven't talked about it at all this fall. We have talked about people who are hungry, and we've told them that it's got to be processed, you've got to wait in line with your handout until we're ready to feed the hungry. Now, we spring on council at the last second, plan to spend $1,000, $10,000 to buy yurts to house the homeless. And don't get me wrong, I don't know whether this is a good idea or a bad idea. It is an idea, however, that was never discussed with the Public Safety Committee or with the Finance Committee. The City Manager thinks that we should have some regular order. Well, if the City Manager keeps doing things that don't have any order at all, then where does that leave us? I frankly think that while it is starting to get cold, that this is another matter that should be processed properly in the proper subcommittees before being sprung on council at the last second.
So just to be clear on process, this resolution was put forward, I'm gonna throw you under the bus, Mr. Mayor. It was put forward by the mayor today, late this afternoon. It was requested by the mayor. I, in my capacity in this job, was required to forward out to you guys and say it was an after closure item being added to the agenda, but I just want to say I in no way, and the mayor can attest to this, put this before the council myself. This was at the request of our elected mayor, and I carried out that duty. So there was, there was zero interest, and honestly, I have a personal opinion on this, and this is, you know, nothing to do with the mayor's initiative here, but we can talk more about that after the meeting, but I just want to, for the record, clarify, this was a proposal by Mayor Quella, and I think he's gonna take full responsibility for it.
I badgered him. I mean, Flavia and I discussed it, we tried to figure out the best possible solution. We keep telling ourselves that we're gonna talk about it later, and then we don't. We don't do anything about it. We have, Todd is not an outside agency.
No, Todd's been working for us for quite some time now, and I'm sure he's well aware of the situation.
It wasn't Todd, again.
Looks like he's totally involved down there. I think Todd's doing a great job.
He is.
What I object, Mr. Mayor, is you sitting on your hands and leaving an issue like this undone until the very last second. That's just not the way to operate your city.
Are you housing a homeless person in your house? Because I am. Let's stop pretending that I've been sitting on my hands when it comes to the homeless issue, because I have not. And I will absolutely not tolerate that, so to speak. It is not. You will not.
Gentlemen, the point of order.
Thank you. Let's be constructive here, guys.
Yep.
And, okay, I'm gonna speak a little bit, because I was with Jay this morning, and I think the reason why we, it's not so much we rushed to put it on the agenda, it's cold. It's getting really cold outside right now. So if we wait another four weeks for the process, so where is that gonna lead us, in December? So that's, I mean, that's why I understand why Jay put it up forward, because it was a conversation that came from the community today. That's what they said they wanted. It's like, I mean, aren't we here to serve the community?
So I really applaud this conversation and the passion that Todd has put into his role. You've really, I'm very proud of the way that Waterville serves our homeless population. But I have to agree with Claude that this item is coming out of left field, and it has many, not left field, but I mean, it's very sudden. It was something that was thought of today. There are many questions about it, and we need to consider this further before we can make a vote.
But we, in January, when we were at the retreat, housing was the number one thing we said we were gonna do. What have we done to move the housing needle? This is something that we have right now in front of us, and able to move that housing needle this year. It was been part of our priority.
That group has been out there all summer. We wait till it gets cold. Now we're gonna jump through the hoops. This is more organized than the nightmare that we spent the last year cleaning up out on Lehman Island. And the council chair's been out there, she saw the mess. It was, okay, this is more organized. I have questions myself. I know it's getting colder. Technically, we have sat on our hands as a group. But I would like it to go through, go through something more than us here tonight at the last minute making a decision. And I don't want to see another Lehman Island incident. A year ago, I was asking for help to get cleanup, because the trash that was left behind on that island all summer ended up all the way down to Hollowell. It went all the way down the river. We didn't get no complaints, because probably most people didn't know where it was coming from. But it was our mess, and we didn't clean it up. At the last minute, Matt got out there, South End Neighborhood Association with volunteers got out there, a couple of people ended up, I'm not gonna say they hurt themselves, but they're still recovering from that cleanup. And we still haven't gotten all the trash off that island. But this is a better idea. I don't want to see another mess like we had last year.
And if I can jump in, I, I respect the process. I don't know the process, or whatever it needs to be, I get, um, and I, I'm supportive of that. What I can tell you is, it's taken six months. Six months of being down there multiple times a week, um, walking through the mud with them, talking to them, for them to trust me. I have people now telling me, they laughed the day that Carla introduced me to them. And they said, he's a police officer, he's gonna rat us out, he's not, he's not here to help us, he's, he's a minion. And now I have them telling me, we need more trash bags, cause they're cleaning it up. So as far as the delay in the process, it's not gonna happen overnight. It took six months of building rapport with these people, and I can, I want the council to do what the council does. But I can tell you, if the process drags on and nothing gets done, the rapport that I've built over the last six months is going away. Those, those empty buildings that are out there, those people are gonna end up seeking shelter in those buildings. And so then, law enforcement, EMS, they're gonna be forced to be dealing with those type of situations. I don't wanna circumnavigate any process.
How many people are down there right now? How many, forty people?
About forty people.
And, see, the thing is, don't you think though, so we get yurts, we get these heating lamps and everything like that, the fences, don't you think that's gonna attract more individuals to this, this area? Which will then spread resources much thinner than, than anticipated?
But I, but I would say, what resources, right now, because they're all over the place, they're not getting the resources. No matter how many times that I can, I can try to connect, because they're scattered, case managers are not able to find them.
There's forty people down there right now, though. You said there's forty people there, though.
Yeah, but we're talking about the winter months, about, about them scattering over the winter months.
And is it potentially gonna draw more people? Absolutely. And, and we can look at it and say, that's, is that a good thing or is that a bad thing? Is, is, as a city, we're saying, we have a, we have a, we're taking care of people? And it doesn't mean you can't cap it, it doesn't mean you say, okay, we can't take anymore, you know, right now, but.
I've been pretty patient.
Yep.
So my concern is, is not so much $10,000. And I, I do hear the argument about process, uh, I, I am sympathetic to that perspective. However, uh, I think, to me, that question of process is important, because I have other questions. That, um, I, you know, yes, it is a, a critical need now, but also, I don't feel like that means we should make choices whose ramifications haven't been considered. So one of the things that occurs to me is, what, what are the zoning implications, right? We're putting yurts, tho, those are fairly substantial structures, uh, where, that we have. I mean, I, you know, I know what a yurt is, I, I've lived in a yurt. And if I were to build a, a yurt on a piece of property, I would have to apply for a, a permit, right? To, to live in that, in that facility. And, I mean, you know, I'm not asking for, but these are, these are hypothetical questions, right? So if we're having people living in, in that, uh, and then secondly, as we build, uh, less temporary structures like that in, in a place, what does that say about the, the permanence and the institutionalization of that segment of public lands as, as housing for a, you know, a, a segment of the population that lives there sort of de facto, it's made it their de facto private residence on that, on that property? And what, what is, so then, uh, if we are going to put those yurts in place for those people, which, you know, I, I, I'm not dismissing out of hand, is that part of a, a longer transition plan uh, for the long-term, uh, you know, the long-term use of that property and the long-term, uh, goals for the people that are gonna be in that, that space? Um, I, I feel like if we were to, to just implement yurts without thinking about what the long-term consequences of that are, you know, how does that, uh, you know, what, what are we saying in terms of institutionalizing that, uh, that kind of use for, for the property there? Perhaps that's what the city wants, perhaps we want an encampment there for the next, you know, 10, 20 year, or how, in perpetuity. But then if we're gonna be spending 10 grand, and certainly this will not be the, the last time that this ask will come before us, because $10,000 is not gonna solve the problem. There'll be more that will follow, for certain. If, if that's the case, uh, what sort of long-range plan are we situating that in? And what is that trajectory? That's what I would like considered, and that's why I think a process is an important part of that, despite the fact that it, it, it is a critical need now. I mean, certainly, that's, that's the problem, there's fires raging everywhere. But, you know, that shouldn't preclude us being thoughtful about how we spend our resources, cause we have limited resources, we've already, that's been a big theme here tonight. And so, uh, if we're gonna spend resources, I want to spend them to the greatest effect. And, and not just to the, the emergent reflexive, uh, you know, need that, that, you know, was drafted today. If that's correct, if we should do this, I, I would like to have it a part of, like a more comprehensive discussion.
And you can, the major reason for trying to get it on an even-weighting closure was really for you to be made aware of it. Imagine waiting three more weeks from now, before you had to hear this. Then, then what? Now you're into middle of December.
But also then perhaps that these kinds of discussions that I'm alluding to might have happened, right? And so when we get it, uh, you know, these questions that I'm asking
Yep.
would be part of the broader context of the proposal that's coming forward to council.
Good, Claude.
So let me propose a way forward that may meet, uh, the needs of, uh, the immediacy of the situation, uh, plus, uh, sticking with process. This month, uh, is a, why the next meeting is so far in the future that Jay and I can't even see it. So, we have two more Tuesdays this month. And, uh, we've already, this evening, decided to send one item to the Finance Committee. Maybe we could send this item to the Finance Committee and, uh, meet, uh, sometime either later this week or early next week, and, uh, be able to bring it in front of a special meeting, uh, next Tuesday or the Tuesday after that.
I, I would propose that the Finance Committee is not the body to consider this idea. I think that we should convene a meeting immediately with, um, the Director of the Homeless Shelter, with Public Safety, and, um, you know, with Todd and other people who can determine if this idea, answer some of the questions that we have about this idea, and see if we can make this work. Um, I think it has a lot of merit that it did come from the people who are impacted. And, um, you know, we've, we've had some concerns about short-term viability as well as long-term. But, you know, what we're talking about here is helping people stay warm through the winter, and doing it in a way that is, um, is going to meet their needs. I, I don't even really, you know, it, it is about money, but it's not primarily about money. It's trying, because we've had these conversations every year that I've been on the council. And, um, so it's a new idea, but let's vet it more with the people who are both, um, have experience serving unhoused people and, um, and, and those who, you know, maybe
You're suggesting an ad hoc committee?
Are impacted themselves.
You're suggesting an ad hoc committee, uh?
I'm, I'm just suggesting a meeting of, of people who could answer the questions about whether this is a good idea for this winter.
So is that something that the city manager would set up, uh, he knows all the stakeholders now?
Well, I think we need a better idea of who's being invited, who's not, and how many people, because we're undoubtedly gonna be leaving some while, so I think there needs to be just some more guidelines on. If we're establishing an ad hoc, ad hoc committee, certainly it's not my position to appoint ad hoc committees. So I think we need to talk about how big, what sectors are you gonna be involving here?
So, Public Safety, um, General Assistance, perhaps, Todd should be on the committee. I think that Katie Spencer-White should be on the committee. You know, Flavia was in these meetings, um, anyone else who was, you know, Jay. I mean, the parties who had the discussion today, and the parties that have information about what, what we can expect from consequences unintended or intended.
And I think today's meeting, what they were really asking for was a recovery center. That's where, that's where all of this started from. So we went from a recovery center to down, 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 what can we do now? But at the end, my notes were, they want a recovery center.
And, and how can we get them there?
How can we get them there?
And that's the key.
And working on that too, which doesn't involve the city.
Yeah, and, and, and again, I can tell you that, you know, in having conversations today, after, after the meeting, the amount of outpouring of people saying, whatever we need to do, we'll do. There are obviously lots of things to be discussed, but that community is, is, is on board with, with whatever we're, as a city, able to do to help. And, you know, in terms of, you know, Jay can, can forward along the, the links to the yurts. They're, they're, they're smaller, they're four-person yurts, they're not something big and elaborate.
It's a canvas tent.
It's a, it's a four-season canvas tent. So, and, and they're, they're aware, due to conversations I've had today, that this is to deal with the immediate crisis. When we talk about long-term and saying, is this what we wanna use the property for?
No.
We've had the conversation already.
Yeah.
Whatever we do, this is to get you through the winter, to, to buy the city and potential stakeholders who wanna be a part of leading the way, to have time to come up with a more long-term plan. So they're, they're well aware that this is a crisis situation response to this. And yes, $10,000 is a chunk of money for a, a short-term fix, but the city maintains ownership of, of the yurts and
Using other places.
You know, we, we, you know, we need time. We've made progress in six months, and anybody who tells you we haven't, hasn't been paying attention. And so we fill this, we fill the gap.
How many yurts? We were thinking around 10.
At, at four people per, per yurt.
And that doesn't mean that we're gonna use them all, that doesn't mean that all 40 people will be out there, but then you'll have them to put in other situations.
It looks like we have people that wanna speak on this, but, um, I, I do think that we should consider I'd like to make a motion that we, we take this discussion, um, into a meeting and, and vet the idea further, because it just seems too unclear to me right now.
Is that a formal motion, or are we gonna?
Well, I, you know, I'm happy to hear from people who wanna speak, of course, but I, I, I just think we can't solve this tonight. And I don't think we're voting on this tonight, so.
Well, yeah, let's move it after the public comments here.
So thank you for hearing me, I'm Carla Karen from the Waterville Area Soup Kitchen. I just wanna speak to Brandon and your concern about, um, other communities and folks coming from other communities. I challenge us to take a look at the broader picture. Perhaps this will be a model for other communities to take heed of, that maybe they won't come here, maybe they'll take Waterville's model, which I know it's a bit scary, because it's uncharted territory, but I think that we are up for the challenge. I do, so just, um, keep an open mind and an open heart and an open hand, and, and we'll see what we can do to make this work. But that was a good point, and Tom, to your point as well. I think we do need to have, um, some questions answered, and so that people can be semi-comfortable. But there is an urgency, because these people are outside and it is getting cold, so, thank you.
Um, I really like this idea, I have a question I'd like to ask Todd, though, if I may. Todd?
Yes, sir.
Hi. Um, how many encampments are actually in Waterville, do you know?
The actual, everybody's definition of an encampment is different. We, the Chief Bonnie and I have walked the, the trail and counted anywhere from 22 to 25, with multiple tents on it, and again, it's hard to say how many people are actually staying in each tent. There are two tents at the head of Lehman Island. And I'm aware of three tents that are active behind Home Depot, between Home Depot and Quarry Road. But again.
What about over on Thrushwood, too?
What do you know about the, oh, I'm sorry?
I just said over on Thrushwood, uh, that's been, that's a pretty common site for that kinda thing, too.
Um, I'm not aware of any. We've been behind, uh, the Best Western, um, between Walmart and Main General. There are, I'm sure, scattered tents here and there. I know people that are unhoused that go to the soup kitchen that will choose not to share where they're tenting for fear of being moved along. So giving an accurate number is, is definitely challenging.
Well, I was, um, I was told to go look at, um, what's going on over at Hathaway Center. So I went over to Hathaway Center on Saturday, and I took a picture of the entrance into it. I heard about a woman, her name is Pam, I don't know who she is, but she's supposed to deliver a substantial amount of food to people there, and the estimate from, you know, I have a lot of sources being clergy, so a lot of, I hear a lot of things on the ground, and some of it's accurate, some of it's not. But I was given an estimate of anywhere from 40 to 50 people, it could be as high as 75, over in Hathaway.
Over in Hathaway, I am only aware, and I've walked Lehman Island multiple times, right now, there are currently two tents and two individuals at the head of, at the head of Lehman Island, and that's it.
So you go over there, because I, on Saturday, I saw a lot of activity. I saw people unloading cars and moving things down their path. So I don't know what was going on, I don't think it was a, um, nice Columbus picnic, but.
Again, I'm, I'm aware of, of two, you know.
Okay, I'm just curious, I'm trying to get a number, that's all, thank you.
Absolutely.
Um, and as far as, you know, having limited resources, we have $800,000 sitting in our funds. So we, honestly, we have emergency funds, and Jay and I have worked in the past to, I mean, this is an ongoing conversation, it seems every year. I love the yurt idea, just because, Jay, I don't know how many tents and sleeping bags we went through.
A ton.
But in my garage, now last winter I was sick, I was fighting a battle with breast cancer for a while. But anyway, before that, we were more active, I was more active in the winter before. And that winter, I know that between the two of us, we delivered like 57 tents, and I lost count of, I don't know how many sleeping bags. And so that was a huge number. But what I found is people kept coming back, because those tents didn't last. They were just not winterized, they weren't ready for the weather. And so, I don't know much about yurts, but, um, I think anything that is much more substantial, because I have thrown, and good people have given me money to throw at it, many, many tents that have ended up in the river or trash.
These are canvas, they last.
Yeah, they just, okay, so I'm all for it, yeah.
Currently, that I know of, this year, nobody, I know of one or two tried, but nobody made an encampment on the island because of all the rain and stuff we had. The island was flooded for most of the summer. Lehman Island?
Hathaway.
Hathaway?
Oh, I'm sorry, okay.
Okay, there, there are two people at the entrance.
Yeah.
Two tents. A couple of people have been dropping stuff off to them. But to actually go out on the island, the most of the summer, the island was flooded over, so nobody really made, they, they learned their lesson not to try and do it out on the island.
How many children, Todd? Can you just give me that number?
I can't. There, there's younger people, but as far as children.
My name is Pamela Miranda. I met with Jay during the summer, explained what I was trying to do with the concourse and the amount of homeless people and the folks that were dealing and doing drugs, passing out on the street, and were hungry, asking for food. And I asked what the parameters were, who was doing what. I did not know. So I delved into what is going on at Head of Falls. I have a great rapport with those young people that live down there. I say that because I'm 65. They're younger than me. They're cold, they're hungry. Do they have issues? Absolutely. We are their keepers. They're part of who we are. They love this community. I take food to them three times a day. Some of them can't get to the soup kitchen. They can't get to the shelter for hot meals. They're sick. I walk the trail. I take them food. If they want to pray, I pray with them. All I'm asking, and all Carla and Todd are asking, is if you've not been where we've been, and you've not stood in the concourse and long enough for someone to ask you for a bottle of water. My, I park my SUV, and it's full of food that's either donated or I cook. The soup kitchen is closed on the weekends. I make 60 breakfast sandwiches and head down there. I get up at 4:30 in the morning. I buy tents, I buy tarp, I buy clothes, I ask for donations. On a given Saturday, I can feed 125 people. And it's not all homeless. There are people that are walking around that have nowhere to go. They sleep wherever they sleep. This is a community that trusts our police officers, that trusts us, that come up and give us hugs when we're down there. We're not any better than anybody else. We're trying to make a difference. We owe it to them to feel safe and to be warm and to be cared about. And it's temporary, just like it's temporary, I have to turn my heat on for the winter. I turn it off in the spring. I'm just asking for however we have to do this in the city of Waterville, is that we take care of each other, and they are each other. They are part of who we are here. And their lives are not any less important than ours. They bring value. And I'll do whatever I can. Just whatever I can do. Can we please just find something soon for them?
Well, I think we're going to send it to a meeting and then back to the next council meeting, at least, or ahead of schedule. We'll talk to Claude. But we want, I didn't really expect you to vote on it today. I needed you to see it. It came to us, and I didn't want to wait three weeks.
I would say, in future, having this addressed in a public comment would be more productive. But it is important to hear the concerns. I think that this idea that has risen to the surface is worth exploring to see if it's viable. So I would propose that we do that as soon as possible, so we have a more fleshed-out proposal to consider at our next meeting.
Patty, what's the motion on the table here?
I think, I think I just...
It's just on the table.
I need a second.
Second.
What was your motion? I'm sorry.
That we, well, that we table this resolution and have a meeting with the, the people that I mentioned before to discuss this idea, see if it's, if we can do it.
Todd, Katie.
Public Safety, the people...
I think if a list were included, that would be helpful, because again, staff does not appoint ad hoc committees or select these groups. So maybe including the motion or another motion, there was...
Committee.
And I think I'm a little, I think I'm a little confused, because we did have a meeting today. We've been having meetings at the soup kitchen. And there's KBH, there's all of the, the fire chief, I mean, the police chief was there last time. So I'm like, we're going through another meeting?
Yeah.
Yeah, because there are questions.
There's some questions that we want to get answered.
I don't think the fire chief was at this meeting today, was he?
No, he wasn't.
Claude, we don't have to wait till the November meeting. Like, let's have this meeting with people like Katie.
We could have a special meeting any of the next, any time in the next two weeks.
Okay.
So it makes sense. Get some of these questions answered. Let's get with the fire chief. Let's get with code enforcement. Let's make sure that we don't need those things.
I point out that we have our own space, so we could have, we could have a meeting, special meeting on Thursday. We're going to have three days' notice. So...
All right, so is that going to happen?
We can move fairly quickly on this without having to wait until the November meeting.
Council Green, can you articulate a list for the city manager, that list that you had there?
Council Green, what was discussed previously was General Assistance, Todd, Katie Spencer-White, Flavia, and Public Safety. Should there be others included?
City Manager?
The Mayor?
Yes.
The, well, the new fire guy isn't on yet, is he?
But there'll be Public Safety. We'll at least have somebody from the Fire Department and somebody from the Police Department.
Yeah, I'm just saying, we got our great fire paramedic would be perfect for this, but he's not available yet, I don't think, is he?
I think it's a good list.
So there is a motion on the floor?
It's been seconded already.
Has it been seconded?
Yeah.
All right.
All in favor? Can I get a motion?
So moved.